Good evening to everybody. Welcome to the Francis Howell School District Board meeting for July. I'd like to call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here at Francis Howell, we have a strategic plan that aims towards four pillars. Regarding teaching and learning, people in workforce, finance and operations, safety and security, and we have a vision. All this is available on our website, but this is a vision that we share collectively as a board. We collectively support it and are excited about having a board agenda that helps us achieve it. So we're actually going to each of us say one thing that is part of our vision for the next five years together, starting with Director Harmon. By the year, uh, front. Ron.
Student achievement.
By the year. I sent a text message a little bit too late in the afternoon, so I appreciate you, Ron, and I apologize for sending the too late reminder.
Recognized as one of the top 5% high-performing districts in the state.
This was a great idea, Stephen. I mean, President Blair. The employer of choice for talented educators, leaders and staff.
By the year 2030, the Francis Howell School District will be fiscally sound with a track record of smart and long-term planning.
By the year 2030, we will be known for graduating well-rounded students who are equipped with the skills and experiences they need to be successful in the world.
By the year 2030, Francis Howell School District will be celebrated for the work we've done on culture, morale, and ensuring all members of our community feel safe and welcome.
Director Ron.
By the year 2030, trusted by families and the community to make good decisions and do what's best for students.
Thank you all, and you can continue to read this both in person or online, scan the QR codes, join us if you're watching us online as well. This agenda has been developed to help us pursue those goals. So with that, Board, I have a motion to approve the agenda for July 17th, 2025, as presented. Director Pushkar.
Second.
And seconded by Director Olkey. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. And motion passes. Jennifer Jolz, our Chief Communications Officer, will provide us an update on the strategic plan.
Thank you, President Blair, for allowing me just a few minutes tonight to give a brief update on the work that's been happening with the strategic plan this summer. So we have really just been focused on rolling out the plan to our school leaders and district administrators to ensure that they're familiar with the goals and the key measures. We want to make sure that our staff are ready to hit the ground running when teachers and students return to school in August. So we had the opportunity to present and discuss the plan of the June School Improvement Retreat. We bring together all building administrators and teacher leaders, about 150 people in the room, to really engage around the plan and to make sure that their school improvement plans that they're working on are going to be aligned with the district's strategic plan so that we're all moving in the same direction. We also had an opportunity to review the plan with administrators who were new to the district or new to an administrator role. That happened earlier this month as part of new administrator orientation, so again, just starting those staff members off on a strong foot. And then coming up next week, we will dive deeper into the plan with all administrators at our annual All Admin Retreat. We anticipate that our first more substantial progress report would be presented at the October Board Meeting this fall. We'll have an update on the progress made within each of the four pillar areas and then preview what's coming ahead over the next couple of months. We are also working to develop a visual dashboard to track progress on the 12 key performance indicators, and we'll share that with the community soon. And then, as President Blair mentioned, the full strategic plan can be found on the district website. There's a nice PDF copy of what the board has been referencing up at the DICE, so you are welcome to download that. If you did, if you downloaded it a couple of months ago, you really only had the high level, like those buckets in each pillar, and so what's been added is that next layer, so each of the strategies in the bucket. So it's now complete. The part you don't see are those action plans with all the timelines, more of that nitty-gritty stuff that our pillar leaders are responsible for, but this is now the most up-to-date version. So just encourage our community to check that out, and then as we have those more substantial progress reports, those will be posted online as well.
Thank you very much. Jennifer Jolz. So now we're going to move towards patron comments. During patron comments, residents of the district and staff members are invited to address the Board of Education on issues related to the school district. Speakers are called forward in the order of signup, and each speaker has three minutes to make their remarks. Please remember that only one speaker is allowed at a podium at a time, and combining time or giving your time to someone else is not permitted. The Board appreciates that you have taken the time to come this evening, and we value both your input and your perspective. I'd like to remind everyone that we expect the speakers will remain civil and respectful when giving remarks. If anyone fails to comply with board policies, regulations and rules, we reserve the right to cut those three minutes short. We also ask that patrons in the audience remain quiet in order to be respectful of the speaker's allotted time. So at this point, we welcome Grayson Justice to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Grayson Justice. I pronounce it he and she. I'm alumni of class of 2013. I want to thank the Board for bringing Brain Pop back to the next school year. I believe that some board members who voted to get rid of Brain Pop were personal instead of professional, because I think it's a great tool for teachers to use in this time era where outdated book, school books are being replaced with factual, up-to-date websites for both students and teachers to use, so thank you. As we celebrate the Fourth of July, I think what America really stands for, and those are diversity, equity and inclusion. Diversity for the many people with different backgrounds, equity for the people who get a great opportunity to live and work in this country, and inclusion where everyone is included in different discussions. Those three things are truly our American values, and I know someone on this board believes that those three things are non-American values, and they are wrong. And it's an American to think that diversity, equity and inclusion are not American values. America was founded that our migrant ancestors must run towards freedom from authoritarianism, and it's a shame that we're heading towards it with anti-Semitism, racism and anti-LGBTQIA on the rise. We can do better than that and fight for the rights for all Americans, just like many other presidents said in their speeches. There were all immigrants, from our parents, grandparents and our ancestors, who came to this land in 1620 away from dictatorship that we're now, unfortunately, living today. And lastly, I oppose two things. One is I oppose the third party to be led or helping with the book review. After watching the last month's meeting, I would be okay if the third party was apolitical, but it sounded more one party that targeted minority groups. And also the ban of cell phones is being first read. I think it needs a little bit of work. Students can use cell phones before, after or during breaks, but things like a tornado or, God forbid, a school shooting, that parents really need to know that their child is okay instead of like a principal or a school official. So I think that it needs to be worked or voted no, same with the third party if ever it comes to a future Board meeting, so thank you.
Thank you for your time. Up next is Carl Suri.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight I want to talk about absenteeism. It's not student absenteeism, which I believe is in your strategic plan, but I want to talk about employee absenteeism. Let me give you a few numbers just to get your attention a little bit. This is 2022 data that was provided by Ms. Simkins, and I provided it to the Board a couple of years ago, and this is teachers only, but the same applies to other workgroups as well. But total teachers' days absent in 2022 was over 18,000. What's that mean? Put it down in perspective. On any given day, 169 school days, we have 114 teachers absent. 114, that's about eight and a half percent of our population, any given day, are absent, which means that our students don't have their regular teacher in front of them, they've got a substitute, right? And everyone can decide on their own how good a substitute can do covering for our normal professional teachers. The other way to think about this is how many absences do you have per teacher over a school year? And it works out to 14 and a half over nine months, so that's about a day and a half, right? A little more than a day and a half every month for every teacher in the school district. All right? So those are the numbers to kind of get your attention a little bit. How I got involved was Ms. Simkins did a presentation to the Board back in 2019 on no fills, right? No fills is you have all these people calling sick every day, and then the district scrambles like a Chinese fire drill. Yes, I shouldn't say that publicly anymore, but anyway, we have an office that basically has to make sure that we can cover all those absences every day. We've increased pay, we've made some positions permanent, and when I heard the presentation, I got to thinking, I thought, the problem's not with the not being able to get substitutes and, you know, the no fills. The problem is we have too much absenteeism, all right, with the numbers I just told you. So I had a very good, long call with Mrs. Simkins, and we went through a number of ideas, and she was very receptive. And this goes back to 2022, 2023, when I sent the email out, all right? And what I put together and proposed to the Board then, doesn't cost the district any money, no loss in benefits to the teachers, impacts the students significantly, you know, if you can reduce absenteeism significantly, you get more time with each student in front of their own teacher, that's got to be a good thing. Hopefully, everyone in this room will agree that's a good objective, right? So if we can agree on the objective, hopefully, we can figure out how to get it done. So again, I put together a three-page email several years ago that I sent to the Board at the time, but guess what? None of those people that were on that Board are on the Board now. We've had 100% turnover in less than three years. Very few of the people that were in administration at that time were there. So I would encourage everyone to go dig my email out. Unfortunately, I deleted the electronic version, but I'm sure the district's got it from December of 2023.
Thank you. Your time is up.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. At this time, yeah, at this time we have FHEA coming forward. We welcome the President Francine Hill.
Good evening. My name is Francine Hill, and I am the President of FHEA. We would like to welcome our new Chiefs, Glenn Hancock and Amy St. John. FHEA is excited to help you get to know our district. We also want to thank Mark Delaney for stepping up to be our interim superintendent while we await Dr. Dominguez. FHEA is looking forward to working collaboratively with all of you. Many important events are happening soon. We are preparing to hold our second Building Rup and Principal Training on August 7th. This is a great opportunity to build positive relationships. FHEA can't wait to meet all the new certified staff at our new educator event. It's always fun to see all the happy faces joining our Francis Howell family. Lastly, the Board Retreat is right around the corner, and we are eager to hear the Board's ideas. We hope everyone enjoys the rest of summer break, and we look forward to seeing everyone again. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now for VISA, Heidi Nixon.
Thank you, President Blair. My name is Heidi Nixon, and I'm the VISA Vice President of Technicians. We would like to congratulate Mr. Delaney on his appointment to interim superintendent while Dr. Dominguez is unable to join us. While we look forward to Dr. Dominguez's eventual arrival, we are excited to work with Mr. Delaney on ways to improve our district for all students and staff. A huge thank you to our maintenance, grounds, custodial, building technicians and clerical staff as they finish up summer-long projects in preparation for school to start in a month. Paraprofessional staff, special education teachers and coordinators kicked off extended school year this week at Westwood. This summer program helps students retain skills that can be lost over the summer months. Thank you for spending your time helping our students succeed this summer. Building and district administration, thank you for allowing flexibility to, allowing flexibility to put building staff to work from home or alternate district locations while much-needed HVAC projects are getting completed prior to the start of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you as well. All right, so Board, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for July 17th, 2025, as presented.
So moved.
Director Pushkar, seconded by Director Harmon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes. Board, I have a motion to approve the Finance and Operations Report as presented. Motion by Director Pushkar, seconded by Director Harmon. And we'd like to officially welcome our Deputy Superintendent of Operations, Dr. Amy St. John, who will present.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Thank you, Board of Education and community, for the opportunity to share an update for the 2025-2026 school budget. Board, you may recall on June 19th, the 25-26 budget recommendation was presented by Ms. Embry, and tonight I will begin to share with you the first update for the school year. I learned quick. Thanks, Scott. This is a familiar slide that Ms. Embry would share with you in regards to any budget amendments or transfers. During the first month of FY '26, no amendments for transfers have been made. Our expected fund balance, as you can see, is at 29.75% to end the current school year that we are in, and we are in the final stages of '24-'25 school year. As we shared last month, we are on target to transfer any unused operating funds, Funds 10 and 20, to the Health Fund, and the final numbers will be shared next month. The bond financials, we are looking at $4.4 million as designated in the unused portion of the bond funds. The second phase, which totals approximately $19 million, will be finalized, and the Board will have an update for that in September. As for the remaining funds, they will be used for any capital projects that have been identified at the 4545 building for parking lots, restrooms throughout the school district and other facility upgrades as they have been identified. As we look at the self-insurance fund financials, our insurance fund does continue to struggle. This is not new information. Ms. Embry had been sharing that throughout last year. Throughout this school year, there was a transfer made of $6 million for it to remain afloat for the expenditures that were coming in. And a quick note to think about for what a fund balance might look like for the self-insurance fund is about three months of expenses. So if you look at the $31 million that's noted just below the yellow block, and you take the $31 million, divide that by 12, you would get 2.5 million times three months, and the goal is that we would have approximately 7.75 million in the reserve in that in order to stay in about a three-month head cycle for our claims. So that's the plan for this year. Much work has occurred across the district so far over summer and much more is yet to come, but as you are expecting in the next couple of months and maybe speak of even during the retreat, the facility master plan is in its final stages, final draft stages, and would be delivered in the coming months, as well as the demographic study, the transportation review, and then an update will occur for the $35 to $45 million worth of construction projects that are going on across the district. The technology staff is doing an amazing job deploying over 4,000 devices this summer. I can see a smile on Scott's face. The end-of-cycle things, Ms. Julie Walsh and her team are working tirelessly to finalize the school year, which does end on June 30th, but it takes about a month for it to be able to get reconciled and brought to close, and then we would be working on the ASBR, which would be the next portion that happens in August. In addition to that, we have open enrollment for benefits that will be in August, that's August 4th through the 21st, and we have begun the beginning stages of the financial audit, which starts in June and continues through October for an onsite portion, as well as a final report that would come to the Board generally in November, but needs to be in before December. The legislative update for this month is the same as it was for last month. Senate Bill 3 had already occurred as Carol had given her final report in June, and I just wanted to bring it back to the forefront this month as not much has been resolved in this area. For benefit of overview, the Senate Bill 3 property tax is a freeze in St. Charles County. It's new legislation that was passed in a special session in June by the Senate, the House, and then signed by the Governor on June 14th. The structure of it caps the value of every residential real estate parcel based on the September 2024 data. It is similar to, but not the same, but similar to what Senate Bill 190 did, but it has no age requirement. So it's anyone who has primary residence in our school district, and it would be frozen at the assessed valuation of, as I mentioned, September 2024. The complex part of this is that the handcuff amendment still would apply in the aggregate, so the assessed valuation would still go up, the tax bill would show a credit, but the district would not realize those funds. So as the expenses will continue to go up in the school district, we would be frozen at our tax assessed valuation for all property at the 2024 rate. All other AV types, assessed valuation will carry on that debt service, so as you have already made obligation under your debt service, that levy would take on some of the additional heat, if you will, as those obligations are already out there. The impact to Francis Howell, as we are estimating, a couple of numbers to have in mind, is that 75.8% is based upon local tax revenue. We are a 0% growth based upon the St. Charles County, Hall of St. Charles County. I think it's important to note, too, that this is not just for school districts, it's also for fire, ambulance, library, special districts, anyone that is receiving the tax dollars from those funds. It's very difficult to estimate this type of effect on the numbers. The overall revenue growth, as we know historically, is what we're using, and then basing that on the percentage of that that comes from property tax, so commercial and real estate tax would still be out there, and our guesstimate at this time is $4.1 million would be the first-year effect of that, and that would be in the year of '26-'27, would be the first time. The future cost of Francis Howell would continue to increase due to inflation, but the funding would flatline for all future budget and create shortages. With that, I would like to thank Ms. Julie Walsh and her team and support, as it takes many hours to pull this information together, as well as Mr. Setso for directing, communicating and delivering at a very high level on the construction projects. That's the majority of what's been going on in the last 30 days. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Appreciate that. Board, do you have any questions?
Very good.
So regarding Senate Bill 3, for me, it feels like the main takeaway is that there might be an upcoming vote on it, but we don't know when it is, or there's other factors there, but if it were to pass, one of the things that we would experience as a school district is 76% of our income is coming from residential, and a large chunk of that would just be frozen in 2024. And every year beyond this, our cost for insurance, gas, buses, everything else would rise, so what we would have is our funding would flatline, our expenses would grow, creating a huge budget issue that would only increase each year. Is that...
The gap would only get wider, correct? Because it would be frozen in time, and it's nothing that... And it's nothing that any of these taxing jurisdictions have ever seen before. There's no benchmark for this story. There's nothing for us to look back in history and to determine how to try to mitigate any of that. It's uncharted territory. It also affects primary homeowners in the state that they are in. So there's a little bit of peace that if they move on, how would that affect it? There's no way for us to be able to guesstimate that, and so it would just be, yeah, uncharted territory.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Jane, do we need to make a vote to all in favor on this one? Alright, so all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion. It was just to approve the report.
Oh, aye.
Should that... I may misread that one. Should that have happened before she presented?
No, she needed to present, and then we could make the vote after, yes.
Thank you for helping me as I continue to learn. Alright. So Board, I have a motion to approve the purchases as presented. Director Pushkar?
Second.
Seconded by Director Harmon. Any questions? Conversations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes. Board, I have a motion to approve the selection of the Policy Committee members as presented.
Summit.
Motion by Director Pushkar, seconded by Director Harmon. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes. Board, I have a motion to approve the selection of the Employee Insurance Committee members as presented.
Summit.
Director Pushkar with the motion, seconded for Director Harmon. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes. I want to take a moment and just thank those of you who are willing to volunteer to be part of those committees. The completion of those votes does not mean that a person can still be added onto those beyond today. It just means that we just approved who are on those committees beginning today. From there, I want to bring up Policy 2656 that is being brought forward for a first read only tonight. Originally, it was going to be a first read, second read, and vote, but because we have a meeting, open meeting training on August 2nd, we will have the second reading and vote at that moment. Between now and then, if there's any questions, I continue to send those questions to myself or our interim superintendent, Mark Delaney. I want to call attention to two different things. One is there are allowances in this policy for emergencies, so if there was tornado or other pieces, this was included. Additionally, the law, how it would continue the entire school day, has been signed by the Governor, so there's a whole lot of things that we're just unable to do or adjust. So if you really like this, or if you really don't like it, this is one of the cases where the Board really isn't trying to get any celebration or critique on it, because a lot of it is just handed down by the state. And yet, we will continue to look for small clarities that we can provide for the schools.
Good.
Alright.
Can we just...
Yep.
Where'd the language come from?
Okay.
Can we just clarify where that come from and why?
I appreciate it.
Yeah, so the language in the policy as it's written, it comes from our policy writer, and the policy writer designates the language straight from state statute. So, you know, obviously, they might tweak a thing here or there, but a lot of the definitions, the defining terms, the bell-to-bell compliance, that all comes from state statute. Originally, we had a district group that a lot of volunteers that spent some time developing a practice for this year. We were thinking that would be in place, but with state statute, we will have to comply with those state laws. And then we received that specific policy from our policy writer.
Point of privilege. I learned what it is. Now I want to use it, sorry. It's a question. I'm noticing that in the policy, it talks about Level 1 and Level 2 consequences in accordance with this code of conduct. I'm also noticing in the language that it doesn't specifically say "watches." And it does say "similar electronic devices," fair, although I do feel like it would possibly help confusion to add the word "watches" and/or "glasses," because that is what we're seeing students bringing into classes now. And having a little bit of ambiguity gives them a lot of room for interpretation. But is there any... Is there any process involved with removing a device if it is discovered on a student that would be a result of this, like Level 1 or Level 2 consequence?
So are you referring to the possibility of confiscating a student's phone, or...
Yep.
Yes, I mean, if a student is found in violation of the code, a device could be confiscated. A student could be asked to put it away as well.
Would that vary by building?
I think it's important that there's some consistency, but the state statute also outlines that in Senate Bill 68, there is discussion in that law that there are no specific zero tolerance, so meaning that there can't be a one-size-fits-all consequence for all things, that all of these things should be looked at on a case-by-case basis. And so this policy and the ability to have things coded as a Level 1 or Level 2 allows...
Oop!
A lot...
We got carried away.
We're good?
Oh, okay. Are you adjusting volumes? I'm very loud. Okay.
You're good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe? Yeah, okay. It allows for administrators to, you know, review the specific situation and make decisions based upon, you know, the facts at hand.
Just for clarity, too, does this discipline data go into the reporting that we do to the state as well?
It would be in our student data reporting system, so yes.
Okay. And then I want to share a personal experience, just for the sake of everyone understanding. As a teacher myself in the classroom, my building last year was actually part of a pilot program in the district where I teach, where cellphones were not allowed at all. There was a similar zero tolerance policy. It was absolutely one of the best teaching years that I have had in over a decade. But one of the things that made it work, and made it work incredibly well, is that the teachers were removed from the conflict of when a device was discovered. And that, to give credit to the administrators who stepped up and said, "We'll come get him." Basically, the procedure was that if a cellphone was seen under the table, a watch, especially during a test, or whatever it was that a student was attempting to use, the teacher would email the admin, whoever was in charge, and then that admin would completely discreetly come and pull that child out of class, and then handle that accordance with the rules. And then that device, whatever it was, went into a black box in the office, and the student could pick up that device at the end of the day after dismissal. That procedure, in my life, revolutionary, because I've never had to have a conflict with a student. I didn't have to have a power struggle. I didn't have to deal with, "I'm calling my mom." "No, we're in school. You're fine. She can call my room." You know, these types of conflicts that we know as educators we're going to deal with with children. And so just to share that story out there, I'm so in support of this. I love it. I hope it makes our school year absolutely amazing and just encouraging that we work as one Howell, to be consistent across the board. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that.
I would like to say I think that is awesome, that you remove the teacher from the conflict.
Yes.
Because if you have a conflict with a student about the phone, that carries on. That's not just that day.
Well, and it removes minutes from educational opportunities.
Yeah, it helps class.
No, we don't stop class.
Yeah, I think that's awesome.
No minutes. No minutes lost.
Can we look into adding that?
I don't know that it would be in the policy language, but it could certainly be something we reflect on our daily practice. And so part of carrying this over for a second read also allows for our Director of Student Services, Mr. Morrison, to work with our building administrators to refine some of those practices. I would also tell you, like Director Olkey shared, many of our schools last year were already engaged in not having cellphone use during the school day. We, as several, one of our board members participated in a committee to help refine that and develop some more consistent practice this year. You know, I don't think that many of our schools are going to see a change. Definitely will be a change at our high schools, but at our elementary and middle schools, those practices were already typically in place.
Awesome.
Thank you very much. And now drawing attention to Policy 3510. I have a motion to approve it as presented. Director Pushkar, seconded by Director Harmon. Any conversation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion passes. And now S. Wilson will come forward to present an update regarding Francis Howell North.
Hi, good evening. It's nice to see everyone again.
He's smiling.
It's been...
That was me. I'm so happy you're smiling.
Oh, good, good, yeah.
Tell us good things, please.
Well, we have some exciting news tonight, so we'll get to. So we wanted to provide an update. It's been a month since we spoke. First thing, we'll go through the agenda. So Kevin Roberts had been here the last couple of months, and due to unforeseen circumstances, he wasn't able to make it this evening. But the good news is, it's fairly easy to report. The air monitors still have not read any dangerous elements in the building. We've got 10 of them still in place. There's been no readings of hydrogen sulfide, LELs, which is methane, or elevated oxygen levels. We have picked up some occasional VOCs and carbon dioxide, but that was traced back to cleaning activities. The janitorial staff uses propane scrubbers, and then the VOCs from the waxing and shortening elements were almost picked up. So it was traced back to that. It was pretty minimal, and it was clear that that was the case. So good news is, the air monitors have been in place for months. They haven't detected any harmful substances today, so... So pardon since the last time we spoke. Last time I was here, we talked about some plumbing breaks that we found in the building through smoke testing, and there was roughly three locations. They were pretty minor breaks. Since then, we have gone in, we've repaired those, re-smoked tested the piping, got the all cleared, that the fix was successful, patched back the block, painted. You'll never know we were in there. At this point, we can say with 100% certainty, the plumbing system in the building is intact. There's no openings, there's no dry drains, dry traps, anything like that. It's completely isolated from the air in the building. So that's a good thing and a good step. The other thing we did is we installed manometers on five locations on the rooftop vents. And we'll talk quite a bit more about that in the coming slides here. We did collect the first round of data recently, and McClure Engineering is processing that data, going through it with their engineering team. We're looking at it as well, and so is Vax Engineering, who's a civil engineer. We're all taking a look at this data and kind of learning quite a bit from it. Since the last meeting, as well, McClure Engineering issued their updated construction drawings that had the vent relocations on the roof. We talked about the strategy to manage the symptom was going to be basically taking the vents as they come out of the roof, extending them to a remote location, getting them high up in the air to elevate, so the prevailing winds carry away any odors that come out. And we had talked about, we may not ever really know what the source is, but we know how to treat the symptom, and that's really what everyone cares about. So that was the goal of those drawings. Currently, those are out to the subcontractor community, and we're collecting pricing on it. So we're in that process. We should have the pricing complete in the next few days. So I want to spend most of the rest of the time talking about the data that we've found from the manometers, and it really wasn't what anyone expected, truthfully. I think we had a thought, which is why we did it, but the data we found was very interesting. So for those of you that aren't familiar with manometers, probably wouldn't be unless you're in the industry, so a manometer measures air pressure basically relative to the atmosphere. So positive pressure means the pressure's greater than the atmosphere. Negative pressure means it's less. So, for example, a hairdryer would be a positive pressure tool. It creates positive pressure. A vacuum cleaner would be a negative pressure tool. So it's kind of a good visual illustration. Plumbing systems are designed to operate under negative pressure. That's the whole strategy of a plumbing system, is the piping should be negative pressure. It draws air in, it prevents sewer gas from escaping that plumbing system. So we collected the manometer data, and so the manometers are set up, and they take a reading every 10 seconds. And we collected it for 10 days. We're still collecting, we just got the next round of data. I never really thought about how many 10-second intervals are in 10 days, but it's 87,000. So when we got the spreadsheet, the spreadsheet was 87,000 rows long. We had to process that data, it took a bit of time, but we got through it. Now, the interesting thing was, we saw a lot of positive pressure readings in the sewer system at the roof. Remember, plumbing systems are designed to work under negative pressure. You really shouldn't see positive pressure, but we saw a lot at the roof. The highest pressure reading was .1 inches, which, to put it in perspective, you've seen the inflatable domes that, like, they have soccer fields and stuff inside. Those typically, they're .1, .2 inches of pressure, and it keeps those domes inflated in the atmosphere. .05, which would be 5/100ths of an inch, is, in a healthcare setting, if you have an immunocompromised patient, and they cannot be exposed to germs, they design those rooms to .05 positive pressure, and that ensures that the patient's safe. That room is pushing all the air out, containmentants can't get in, germs can't get in, and the patient's safe. So that's the design standard for a positive pressure room. Now, the highest reading that was recorded in those 10 days was .1, so a tenth of an inch at the rooftop vents. So that's a lot of positive pressure. There was a lot of .05 readings at the roof level as well, which is also significant. It keeps the patient safe and strong enough to do that. Now, the interesting thing as well is, these readings were observed both when the building was occupied and unoccupied. We were picking up readings at 2:00 AM, midnight, weekends, and also while the building was occupied. So what that tells us is, the pressure's not coming from the building, and it's not coming from people in the building. It's not coming from activities necessarily, because it's happening seven days a week in a given time. So the next slide, this is one day. This is a 24-hour interval, starts at midnight, or it's the next midnight. And this is representing about 8,700 data points running through a chart. The zero line, right in the middle, that skinny line, that is neutral. So that means if there's no pressure, no positive pressure, no negative pressure, it's just neutral. That's that line. Anything below the line is negative, and that's where a plumbing system should be operating, is negative. Now, this is on a Saturday. No one's in there on a Saturday. And you can see, we've got pressures up to .1, up to a tenth of an inch. The .05, which is the positive pressure interpretation, we've got a lot of those. And we have a lot of them that point zero three. So very unusual. We don't see that in plumbing systems. Okay, so this is a Saturday, the building's empty. Next one is a Wednesday. There is not a lot of people in the building, but there are people there. This is a Wednesday. It's mostly negative, occasional positive spikes, but mostly negative. You really shouldn't see any positive spikes, but we see fewer. What we've seen throughout the week is this is not terribly predictable on when these spikes are. Most of them are between 9:00 and 5:00 during the day, but it could be in a given day of the week. Some are later in the day. We don't see big spikes in the middle of the night, but we do see elevated levels, as the first slide showed throughout the night. Now, some of that makes sense, because when you connect a building to a sewer system, it's no longer just that building sewer system. You're tied to all of St. Peters at that point. You are basically connected to St. Peters, St. Charles, wherever those sewer systems are, you're no longer isolated. That's what we believe we're experiencing in the building, is it appears that the municipal sewer system is putting positive pressure back to the building and creating the problems that we've been chasing and experiencing. Now, we're not prepared to say 100% that that's the case yet, but that is what the data is pretty strongly suggesting at this point. We did contact St. Peters a couple of months ago and asked them if they were aware of any problems that could be causing an issue like that, because we had some suspicion that there could be something going on. They looked at the drawings, they were pretty thorough, and they said, "No, we don't think that there's anything going on." We went ahead and ran the testing anyway to see, and it does appear that there's an issue. Now, the next step, right now, we have monitors on the roof, and we're testing the pressure of the roof. right now, we have monitors on the roof. We're testing the pressure at the roof. There's only two openings in a plumbing system. One is on the roof, and one's where it connects to the sewer outside the sewer main. They might think, "Well, there's sinks and toilets and things like that." Those aren't really open to the atmosphere, because they have water in them that disconnects the air inside the plumbing system from the air in the building, and that's a trap. So it traps sewer gas from coming out. So in that case, the only place that a plumbing system is exposed to the atmosphere is on the roof and where it connects to the sewer main. You can't get positive pressure on the roof, and we do have those valved off now, so winds and things like that won't affect the pressure in the plumbing system. The only thing that can affect it would be the municipal sewer system at this point. So the next test we're doing, and we implemented it today, we're collecting data, and we want to see it through the weekend, is we install the manometer on the sewer main itself in the manhole to read the pressure in the sewer main. And I think at that point, if the sewer main also shows what the building is reflecting, and it's pretty clear that the problem is coming from the municipal sewer system, we've been chasing it inside the building. It was actually an external problem. Now, there is good news that goes along with that, and that's why I was smiling earlier, is I don't, we never really want to fix the symptom. We want to fix the problem. What this data, why we're excited, is we think we can fix the problem and not just address the symptoms. So another thing I'd like to address is the few breaks that we identified in the building. When a plumbing system is operating the way that it's supposed to under negative pressure, you're not really going to smell those breaks. You might get an occasional slight smell, like an exhaust fan creates some negative pressure and pulls sewer gas out. But under general situations, where it's negative pressure on the left side, it's trying to air in. The sewer gas is not going to. Under a positive pressure system, it is emitting sewer gas out of that break. And a small break, like we found, that was maybe three inches long and not quite an inch wide, it can get a lot of sewer gas out of there. And we were on site and experienced it while we were smoke testing. There was five of us, including the engineers and the plumbers in the corridor, and there was no smoke coming out of it. We were trying to find one of the breaks. We knew it existed. And really, out of nowhere, smoke poured out of this break, filled the corridor, and basically chased the side corridor. Now, that would represent one of those positive spikes that we saw in the chart. It aligns with what the teachers had said to us when they experienced it, that it comes on suddenly and often disappears as sudden as it came. It's the piece that makes it all make sense. It is what we're finding at this point. So while there were a few breaks, it wouldn't ordinarily cause the problem. Now, it also explains why, when the air vents valves were installed on the roof, we experienced smells in different areas that we hadn't before, and to a greater level in those areas. And the reason that is, is when the building would experience a positive pressure, and you have 30-plus vents on the roof, the pressure came out of the vents, and it relieved some of that. Now, it was pushed out of the vents, drawn into the air handlers, and pumped back into the building. Once you cap the roof off, so that can't happen, it only has a couple places to go, and it was out of the few breaks that were in the building. And that's why those breaks, after the roof was valved off, became very pungent, where ordinarily, you probably wouldn't have smelled them. And we didn't really smell them beforehand, because there were a lot of areas for that pressure to relieve, even though it shouldn't be experienced in it. So it's beginning to make sense now. So next steps. McClure Engineering and Vax are working through solutions to fix the problem at the sewer main before it gets into the building. A couple of reasons that we want to do that. We can address the symptom. It's fairly costly. And it also congests the roof, so it makes it difficult for maintenance. We'll have a lot of pipes running horizontal, so filter changes, things like that is hard for maintenance staff. And you're just fixing the symptom. So you're still going to have, if we do that, you still have positive pressure in your building, which ordinarily wouldn't affect anything, but if you were to get a plumbing break, or to get a drain that dries out, you're going to experience a lot of smell where you really shouldn't. And it's always just better to fix the problem. So that's what we're working on right now. We should be getting final pricing for the rooftop plumbing vent stack next week, in case we need to implement it. We can. And then, once that design is determined, how we're going to address the problem, we'll get that fixed. That will be a lot cheaper. So it's hard to say, but it will be significantly cheaper, less disruptive. You really won't even know it's there. So it would be a much better fix. And then, at the same time, we're going to continue monitoring the air, just to make sure that everything's good. Now, the last time we met, I also assured everyone that you're going to work on this plumbing vent system on the roof, get them relocated, so you don't have a problem going back to school. And one of my main concerns was, am I able to deliver on that premise? And I feel confident that you're going to return to school and not experience smells, because we have the roof capped off. Smells can't come out of the roof. The curious thing before that is, why were these few breaks causing so much smell? And now, no. And those are fixed. So there is no plumbing open to the building at all. There's really no way that you can experience smells when you come back. And I think, with the new information that we learned, the best final solution for the district and the building is to go this route, fix the problem. And I don't think that you're at risk for abnormal issues when you come back this fall. So exciting news. I mean, we've been chasing this for a while, and I would say that the steps that we're taking is not things that the industry does. We're really kind of trying this new ground here, trying to figure this out. It's a very unusual problem that people have not encountered in the past. So we're happy to be able to make this matter right here. So we have to answer questions.
Thank you. Board members, any questions?
Yes. If we, is it even possible, looking at the schematics of the municipal connections where the building is hooked up, is it even considerable that we would connect to a different part of that grid?
It's a good question, but it's not reasonable to use. So the sewer system primarily works on gravity. Everything flows downhill. There are sewer systems where there's pumping stations if it has to go uphill. But you really, when you deal with the elevation changes of the land and the sewer pipe, the elevations of that below ground, there's not a lot of options where to connect to it. And if we're experiencing positive pressure back through the municipal system, it's going to be widespread. It would be hard to tell how far you, I mean, you may have to go a mile, you know, to get away from it, if you could even identify that point. So, good question, but...
I think that's my main thought, was if that's possible. And then, I don't know a lot about, like, engineering, but I know that there's, like, pressure valves, right? Where you could put a pressure valve in between the two sources to keep consistent pressure. Is that a thing? I don't, I'm just curious.
So that is a few things that the engineers are looking at, is either, you know, some kind of basically valve in the sewer main. It could be providing a relief in the sewer main before the building, maybe like south of the tennis courts, where when they do experience this positive pressure, it gives it a route to get out before it reaches the building. It's possible putting a type of a trap in the sewer main to separate it from that pressure. So the engineering intent would be to disconnect the building from the municipal air, basically in the sewer system, before it gets to the building. That's what they're working on, and they're trying to determine the best way to do that.
Awesome. Thank you.
I was just wondering, who is to pay for this rooftop plumbing vent stack relocation?
So I don't think that I'm able to answer that necessarily. I think the district is, they have an attorney. They're working through that process. I don't think that's something that can directly influence that.
So we don't know yet who's paying for that?
I don't know. Yeah, I think it's still in discussion.
We'll do some further digging to that question and bring that back to the board.
So when does the fix begin? When does that begin, and will it be completed before first day of school?
So, rough timelines. I would say the engineers are working on it. We're going to collect the data on the sewer main over the weekend. That seems to be when we see a lot of spikes. Once we determine that, we need to get in touch with St. Peters. We have contacted them, but we need to meet with St. Peters, get their information, see what they know, know with new information. The engineers are working through fixes. I would say that it might take a few weeks to get the fix determined. It should be a pretty fast installation at that point. I don't see the installation as being highly technical. It's probably going to be one or two sources below ground. I think it's something that we can get in pretty quickly. I think getting it in before school, with school starting in about four weeks, is probably not likely that it would be installed before school. I mean, we might be right there. But I also don't expect that you'll experience yours when you go back to school. But I think we'd be very close to the start.
Thank you for your time. And now we welcome Mr. Mark Delaney, our interim superintendent for interim superintendent comments.
Thank you, President Blair. I'd like to give a warm welcome to a few new faces in our district, on our leadership team, who started their roles beginning this month. Dr. Amy St. John is our new Deputy Superintendent of Finance and Operations. She is now overseeing multiple departments, including finance, facilities, safety, transportation, nutrition services, and human resources. So quite a load for Dr. St. John, and we're glad to have her with us. Also here with us tonight is Mr. Glenn Hancock. He's our new Chief Academic Officer, and he is responsible for overseeing our entire academic program, including curriculum, assessment, student services, alternative learning, adult learning, and elementary and secondary education. We are excited to have both Amy and Glenn on our executive leadership team, and I look forward to working with them to help move the mission of the Francis Howell School District forward. I would also like to acknowledge other new staff members, directors and building administrators, who also began their contracts on July 1. We've had an opportunity to meet several of them at new administrator orientation, and we are excited to have them on board as well, as we look to make progress this year. I want to share tonight that one of our bus drivers won the state safety competition again this year, earning a spot in the national bus safety competition in Texas. This marks the second year in a row that Francis Howell School District has competed at the national level. Fifty-three bus drivers traveled from across the globe to compete in this competition in Hayes County, Texas, for a two-day program put on by the National School Transportation Association. Be sure to watch for a story and interview with this incredible driver on our social media channels soon. Congratulations to all of our drivers who competed and took home awards in this competition. If you are interested in joining our award-winning transportation team, we are hiring bus drivers and monitors now for the upcoming school year. I would be remiss if I did not mention that.
Thank you.
Also, a back-to-school checklist was emailed to all district families earlier this week with helpful information and tasks to complete before school begins on August 18. School supply lists were linked in the email and are posted on the district website. For our families, don't forget about the Missouri Tax Free Weekend coming Friday, August 1 through Sunday, August 3. This is a time when you can stop shop tax-free and save on back-to-school items and supplies. And finally, I think a lot of people think what goes on in schools in the summertime, and as we all know quite a bit. I want to remind our community that while students, teachers, and some staff are off work in the summer, many others continue to work throughout June, July, and August. Summer is the busiest time of year for some of our teams, like our grounds crews who mow over 1,100 acres per week, our facilities, maintenance, and custodial staff who have been waxing floors, doing deep cleans, maintaining facilities to be in good working order, and our HVAC technicians who are busy making sure our school buildings are nice and cool as staff prepare to return to their classrooms to get them ready for the school year. I also want to acknowledge our computer techs and IT staff, who are doing a heavy load with all things technology, both new and old technology that the district is either bringing in or maintaining, and getting those things ready for our students and staff as they approach return in August. And once again, I want to thank you, President Blair and Board of Education.
Thank you. We have board comments.
I would also like to say welcome to Amy and Glenn. We appreciate your hard work they're going to be doing for us. I want to say a special thank you to Mark Delaney for stepping in as our interim superintendent. Mark has a long history of service and positive leadership in the Francis Howell School District. In these uncertain times, we need a leader who will stand up to whatever forces threaten our public schools. As a board, we are standing beside you and the entire staff to ensure our students and teachers remain respected, valued, and supported. Thank you.
I'd like to just say, make sure you look at the agenda. There's a big construction update, a lot of really good news. It's really exciting, just worth celebrating. I do want to share that there is no update regarding Dr. Mike Dominguez. We are unable to give an update at this time, and so the update is, there is no update. I do want to repeat what Treasurer Owens just said, and just a big thank you for Mark Delaney to be able to lead as our interim superintendent in this moment, to help us get ready for the school to begin. There are a number of different ways I've seen your leadership in display over this last few weeks. I just want to say thank you on behalf of those who you are serving. I appreciate that. I was also going to celebrate those preparing the buildings over the summer, because all the people, especially waxing the floors and getting the devices ready and everything else like that. There's just a lot of stuff happening. And hopefully, when we get together, we see all these different angles to the school district, we're able to say, "Look at how many people Francis Howell has working to make it such a great school district." So hopefully, when we come together for a board meeting, we're able to see different angles and nuances to what's going on. The very best days for Francis Howell are still ahead of us, and we're really excited to be part of that, excited to be able to say to all of you, you have been equipped and trusted to live forward to this strategic plan. We're excited about getting closer and closer to that vision for 2030. And with that, I'd like the board to have a motion to adjourn open session and return to closed session.
Second.
So we got a motion by Pushkar and a second by Olkey, Director Olkey, who seconded before the first. But to be honest, you two are really fast today, so you don't...
I'm so excited to learn Robert's rules.
And so are we. So again, thank you to everybody else. All those in favor to adjourn open session and return to closed session, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. Motion passes. Thank you all for being here for the board meeting.